So it is Thursday, February 15th, 6:01 PM, and I'm calling the special meeting of the Groton Board of Education to order. The first item, this actually wasn't meant to be a discussion, but rather I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that an alumni group has approached us about a field naming request. This also could involve a significant fundraising opportunity. I want the board to be aware of it. My intention was to name an ad hoc committee. If enough members are interested in joining that committee, they could study it and then refer it to the board, which is the procedure laid out in our bylaws. So I just didn't want to do this without the board being aware, and I wanted to do it in public. But there's really nothing to discuss or vote on tonight. So having said that, we will move on to the budget work session, and we'll start. Superintendent Austin has presented us with a list of efficiencies.
We really listened to what the board was saying about focusing on teaching and learning. And as I see it, every member in our community, our school community, is devoted to teaching and learning. The central office helps support the schools. And then in our schools, from the people who are feeding our kids their breakfast and lunch, to our custodians and maintenance, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, every single member, and our principals and our leaders. They're all instructional leaders, and they're very much involved in teaching and learning. And that is our mission. And we really appreciate that. But one of the things we really did as a central office team and with our principals was to look at every line item and kind of go through it. We also heard you talk about travel and some professional learning. We do have a lot of that in grants, so we were able to find some cost savings. So I'm going to actually turn this over to Dave and have him speak to it. One of the big buckets was OPEB, and we did discover some interesting information about OPEB that might allow us to do this. So I'm going to turn it over to Dave and have him kind of walk you through it. And then we can certainly go back to any item that, you know, highlight it, put a little mark beside it if you want to talk about it some more. But I'm really proud of this team. I was saying, how do I get under a double-digit number? You know? And with this plan, it would get us really to a 9.15. So a lot of good work was done. There was nothing not, you know, unturned. Everything was like really studied, looked at. And I'll turn it over to Dave Flag.
Okay, I think everyone should have a handout, hopefully. It's up on the screen as well. But I'm just going to start, try to follow a little bit of Adrian's lead. It might not be exactly perfect, but, you know, starting from maybe the least impactful to a student, down to some things that we're still thinking about on the first page. So the first one, I think Superintendent just mentioned, was an idea around deferring our 2025 OPEB payment. We have learned that it's not a requirement to make the payment. It's a recommendation to keep the fund fully vested. There's some trick to this a little bit, right? You know, it could potentially have some impact on the bond rating, so the town would have to weigh in on this one. But, you know, over the last day, as I studied this, you know, I found 16 districts that are funding their OPEB liability to about 8%, which is exactly where we are. Actually, we're a little bit higher, but that's okay. And then I looked at, I pulled some information off the OPM website at the state and looked at all the towns. And they're funding somewhere in that 18%, 19%. But what was interesting, the last time the data was updated, they only funded about 69% of their actuarial determined contribution. So I think this is, you know, legitimate for it. It's a big number, so I thought I'd start with that one.
Could you also speak to, speaking to our actuary, the one who actually did our report? And you also spoke to the board's attorney, Floyd Dugas, to make sure that we were, you know, doing this the right way.
Yeah, we spoke to Floyd, and then I reached out today to the actual actuary who does our annual report. And she confirmed the same thing, that, you know, that OPEB is a government-sponsored program. There's not a statute or requirement for a specific amount of funding. Obviously, all the reporting and actual determined amounts are to keep that fund whole and make sure there's assets in there to meet the liability over a course of time.
And the same, we got the same information from Floyd Dugas as well.
So, so OPEB is employee benefits in retirement?
Yeah.
So we, but are we contracted to pay certain employee benefits in retirement through, like, staff contracts?
Yep. So, you know, it goes into a trust.
So we're just reducing the cushion in that trust?
Yes, that's exactly right. Kind of the way we've done with our health savings reserve, in a sense. But this is on the retirement side.
You know, and Adrian, historically, we've paid little or none, and we've caught up a lot over the last few years. So I think we're in a much better spot. If you look, I think if you look 2016 or '17, we were not funded at all.
Yeah.
Some towns are doing pay-as-they-go. I certainly don't recommend that. We still have a cushion. And my understanding is the town is at about 48%. Combined, Town Board of Ed is at 48%.
And you did talk to the mayor?
Yeah, I did mention this to the mayor as well. I recognize Jen.
So if we did do this, are we just deferring the problem until fiscal year 2025 budget? And so...
Well, I don't know necessarily that you're deferring. You know, it's a trust. So if you think about a trust, it's over the span of, I think actually when they do their assessment for us, it's over a 17-year span. So, you know, we'd have to make a commitment to make sure we make up that difference over those 17 years and get back on track. And the reason I really started with this as an idea, not forgetting the number, but as we go down further, we're going to talk a little bit about our evaluations and some research we want to do into fully insured and the state partnership plans. So at that point, you know, we get away from the reserve, this full, this self-insured model for us. Our costs become much more predictable, and I'm hoping that that'll allow us to put some more money into OPEB.
And I'm hearing from many superintendents that it's working so well in southeastern Connecticut, the ones that I work with. And it's really been beneficial for the employees. And it's something that we want to contemplate even going into next year. I've already started talking to my unions about it, and I think it would be a benefit to them. At one point, when we first investigated it, it was more expensive to do. But now we're hearing that it's not as expensive and that it could be doable. So we have more work to do, but it's definitely worth investigating.
Yeah, I think, you know, personally, I would like to have MDG associates, the town and board, well, the town hired them, I believe, they're the insurance consultants. Have them come in and actually explain. They have done studies over the years to show that it wasn't worthwhile to go to the state plan. I want them to do a new study to see, could we go as early as next January? What are the implications with the town? And have them, you know, explain to us, you know, what's the difference between that and going into like a fully insured plan? You know, I'd like them to come in and also explain how they came to the recommendation they did for next year.
Years ago, yeah. Oh, for next year.
Yeah. Can I see it?
The MDG consultants, that's who we coordinate with for the insurance stuff.
Yes.
They manage the self-insured plan for the town and the Board of Ed.
That's my understanding. They are the consultants for that.
And we're going to be seeking their advice on switching over to the state plan.
They have done those studies in the past at the request of the town and Board of Ed. I'd like to see those studies, and I'd like to have them do it again. If there's a question as to whether they are the right organization to do it, then we can, we can definitely explore who would be.
Does MDG have a financial interest in the self-insured plan versus the state plan?
I believe the town pays them a fee. I don't know what that's based on, if it's...
I don't know if that would change.
We need to find more information about that.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
They're, they tell me they're a consultant, not a broker, per se, but I think it bears investigation. And if we could have them in, we could find out more information about their credentials.
I think everyone knows where I'm going with that line of thinking. Like, you know, if MDG has invested interest and if they see some residuals based on the fact that we're with the self-insured plan with the town, then they may not give great information towards switching over to the state if they don't see a dividend there.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we should get multiple points of information?
Agreed.
The advice of switching over?
Yes.
I mean, just that.
Jen?
If we are to invite them in, will we be able to get them in before we vote?
Well, that's the whole question. We'd have to find out if they're available. Dean?
Where does the OPEB, as far as the materials that we have in front of us go? Where does OPEB figure? Because the 201 lines, at least in my materials, are all blank.
Well, that's because we just got the updated insurance numbers.
Okay, that's part of that.
That's where it's, it's all there. Yeah, because it's retiree benefits.
All right.
In the new set of documents you gave us for the back of the book with function codes, was that added in yet? Or is that something that's still coming in the new book?
I just added it in this week.
Okay, all right.
Because I wanted to give, you know, the board the options on which, which one to use.
Right.
This was part of the other shoe that dropped?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the second one, just moving on, was around transportation changes. You know, it's a round number because there's a couple different variables here. To give you some sensitivity, one bus is about 78,000. But there might be some opportunities as well. I know Mark has been working with the town and utilizing some of the small vans for some of the small sports teams. I wanted to work with Denise a little bit on the curtain, which is more or less a special education private passenger. And I'm going to meet with the bus company again this week as we go through some of their invoices.
And Sam and I have talked about sending parents an opt-out if they're really already, you know, bringing their kids to school. And then we can always opt them back in. But I think if we have a better handle on, because bus drivers will still go to some of those old stops and stop for kids. So it would be more efficient in our bus routing. And there could be some other efficiencies, too. So it might be worth, you know, sending that out, information out to families and seeing, you know, what kind of response we get.
I think other districts have done that, too.
Right. And I think sometimes parents will call the principal, and they'll say, the bus doesn't need to come here. Just, you know, we're bringing our child. So I think at least we'd get more accurate numbers. But it would not be that they disqualified for busing. They could come back and call us and say they need it again.
Jay?
Yes.
All right, so then my understanding, and I've been here long enough, you should know this, but is that we are not required by law to have a fleet sufficient to carry all students who are enrolled, whether they actually ride the buses or not. We could literally tailor the fleet to actual usage.
Yep, as long as we had parents sign off and say that they were willing to, you know, or they were already driving their children. We start out with providing everyone a bus route. I mean, that's the intent. I mean, that's what we do. And, but we do, you do notice, I mean, many of you who drive your own children to school, you see the lineup, both at the middle school and the high school. But even at all of our elementary schools, many, many families, you know, choose to drive their child to school and pick them up.
How many cars in the Fitch parking lot are student cars? Do you know that? Anybody know that? I'm just curious how many kids drive themselves. I mean, my daughter does, but...
Well, there's a whole senior section, you know, that they have.
Probably about 30 in the senior section. Might be 60 to 75 total, but just guessing about that area, the parking lot.
And even to know which students, you know, are driving their own cars would help, because that would, you know, if someone's driving them or they're driving themselves.
Well, they pay for a parking spot, correct?
Yeah, I'd say it is. Anderson, yeah.
So we have data on other empty buses running around on...
They're not empty, but people will say to us, and I'll be behind one, and sometimes you just can't see the little ones. But they look like they're half-full or half-empty, however you want to look at it. But then there's some buses that are very full. So, you know, depending on...
And after school, there's less ridership because of sports.
Definitely. In the middle school and high school, we have a lot of kids participating in a lot of different things.
So there's a possibility to consolidate runs?
Yeah, I think we got to do everything, you know?
Agreed.
Yeah. I know that's trouble to do. We had an issue a couple of years ago with the buses. Are we going to be setting some sort of a delegate balance out there? If you say, well, we're going to start to jiggle the bus route, now all of a sudden we wreck something that mostly works. And then we've got, to solve one problem, we've introduced other problems.
We're hoping that it will be a better run for kids and families, because we do have some bus runs that are, you know, close to an hour. And, you know, if we know not to stop at certain bus stops, then that will get kids to school better on time and home better.
It's really worth a look.
Yeah.
Susan, I know, I heard from Lauren Cassini, our student data manager, that they have updated the transportation survey. And they're just, you know, putting the finishing touches on it. And they're going to be sending it out via Parent Square just so we can get a better idea, you know, what our transportation needs really are. So I could provide updates on that as we get them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is a comment not related to the budget, but just because it's on my mind for Dave. You know how you showed us the invoices and they didn't put the time? And then part of our contract is that they were supposed to show us the time? Maybe we could tell them, if they can't prove the time, we don't need to pay for the time? I'm not sure if that's, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what's built into the contract. But that's something, if they can't prove it, we shouldn't pay. We'll just pay for the per-use to drive us to whatever location. And I'm sorry, I'm detracting, but it just came up on my mind.
Now, Jen, you're on my team because, well, you're on the finance committee, so you already know I haven't paid.
Okay, yeah.
And as a matter of fact, they're coming in tomorrow. We're probably going to spend four hours with them tomorrow. They want to go through every invoice and document miles and time. So we'll see if we can get a little bit closer tomorrow.
Can we adjust the main display so that I can see the remote members and make sure we don't have any questions? I can look at the chat.
I have to get Dave to stop sharing.
Or is there a way to...
Stop sharing, okay.
Well, not stop sharing, but...
He's just going to, he's going to take care of that first and then we'll share again.
All right. Just checking with you, Rob and Bev. All right, thank you.
One more question, Jen?
Yes.
If we were to adjust, and I know you're projecting, you know, what's 24, 25 going to look like in terms of ridership? Say we want to go, you know, as close to the bone as possible and only provide buses for those who actually are going to ride buses. What if it turns out that the guess is off, and then we need another bus? Is it readily available? Could you go back to SDA and say, I know we contracted for, you know, 38 buses, but we need a 39, something like that? Is that easy to do, or is that an act of Congress?
It gets done.
If we start out the year with X number of buses, we always have a couple of buses in reserve as part of the contract.
Okay.
There would be a couple at least. We have a certain percentage that they have to have in reserve.
And how about the other way around? How about we start out with X number of buses, and it turns out we need X minus one? Can we walk away from a bus without increasing the penalty?
Midyear, after we start the year?
Say we start the year and it turns out, gosh, we don't need that bus, that extra bus. It is an extra bus. Or do we incur some sort of a contractual penalty? Or do we have to still pay for it?
I'd have to look a little more detail in the contract again.
All right.
Okay, so the third one down was really just a math exercise, which is cut travel by 50%. So what's really left on the other side of that is some of the travel costs in Fitch for some of their programs. Anything at Central Office, anything outside of Fitch, and I think there's a small part in GMS, would be zero. The, oh, sorry.
Is there a way to get a look inside that line item as far as like which travel would be saved and which travel would be cut in more detail?
Yep. As a matter of fact, I've got a bunch of papers here, but I can certainly get you that. If not tonight, I can scan something for you.
There's nothing we can look at right now?
I just have paper. All I did was pull up invoices. So the next one was to eliminate food purchases with BOE funds. And this one really goes with the unfunded lunch balances. They're on the same line. So at one point, I think I mentioned to you, we put a placeholder in there of about $20,000 for unfunded lunch balances for next year, just considering the magnitude of the debt that we have this year. So the idea here would be, we zero that out, take that out, and then eliminate any additional food purchases with BOE funds. Right now, it's, 95% of it is through our own food services, but there is a charge that goes back and forth. So we'd have to work with Ernie to see if he can absorb that within his enterprise fund.
Do you guys have an extra one of these papers at all to follow along?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to know a little more detail on that, too, as far as like what food purchases or what purpose would be? Is it eliminated completely?
Zero.
So what sort of food is that? The food that we serve the students?
Well, like, you know, there's a convocation breakfast. I don't know. I mean, I could...
Food services that are extraneous to the actual operation of the school? Like, not today?
Yeah, we're not talking about student lunches.
No, not student lunches. This is outside of that.
We provide food during professional develop... I'm sorry, do you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We provide food during professional development days, that sort of thing. Breakfast and snacks and stuff.
And during negotiations for board members. They might have to bring their own sandwich.
Oh, that's it. I forgot that.
In the middle of those two, I had a line item which was, you know, potentially hold site budgets to flat to fiscal year '24. So they're currently up 2%. I think you've seen that. The $70,000 number, just so you're aware, $50,000 that I had alone is for the ROTC program, which was included in Fitch this year, which was not last year. So we'd have to think about how we fund that as well. But in total, their site budgets are up to $70,000 number.
In regards to that, that's an instructional program. So wouldn't that be in some ways protected?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just telling you, in that number right now, if I just took the pure site number, site budget numbers, I just wanted to make sure you had a reference point. If you go back to your book and look at the site budgets year over year, it's just 70,000. But in there is that ROTC. So that's why I mentioned it, just to make a determination.
It might be other things, though, that get removed, you know? But it is, when we, when they've put in, added in their site budget, they've had it for really specialized instructional means. And we do have to cover instructional materials, as you know, with our policy.
The next one down is the insurance deductible. If you recall, I mentioned putting one placeholder in there for, you know, if we have a potential loss next year, because with all the losses we've had this year, we haven't even had money to cover the deductible. So that was an initial placeholder. I just put it on the list to take it out.
Would it be...
I think he's got to answer it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would it be possible to move, to talk to the town about just taking that kind of thing out of our budget, since it's facilities or, you know, so that type of, you know, because, you know, it's all the same. It's everybody's, it's everybody's money. So maybe, you know, the variable on that, just so we don't have the variable in our budget. Is that possible with the way things are structured?
We, there have been discussions with regard to the current year.
Yeah.
I'm actually meeting with the town manager next week. And we're sitting down and looking at that together.
Yeah, he's indicated that he may be able to cover some of the deductible.
Yeah.
And other things, too, with the facilities.
For this year, but for next, I mean, is that a discussion for years to come? Or we can just kind of...
It could be. I could add that to the discussion, like in the future, right?
Yeah.
I will.
And David, I think we just skipped over the unfunded lunch balance placeholder.
I just mentioned that as along with the food services, because that's the total in that line item, 628.
But there was a marginal notation about...
Yeah, I just, I just put a suggestion out there. I mean, maybe we just, what I mean by a point, just have somebody be on point to help Ernie facilitate maybe a more robust process in terms of collecting. He does a great job. But I don't know if additional help and additional thoughts would help us achieve some of those balances, you know?
I do know that they do send out letters to anyone, just to make sure that they've had that opportunity to fill out the paperwork. I did see that in the, in the governor's proposed budget, they are hoping to continue to pay the reduced lunch and the breakfast.
Yep.
So...
Which is great.
That's good news.
I'm at reducing BOE-provided cell phones. I just literally reduced the number of cell phones. I don't know exactly what our contractual rate is per line, but, you know, we spend about 78 today. If we reduced about 10 lines, that would get us $10,000. Next one, you know, we're going to get a little detailed here, but we're into postage machines. There's one each at Fitch and at the Groton Middle School.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jen.
Sorry. Regarding the cell phones, we have 78 cell phones that we pay for. I believe that might be sort of high for like the number of, like, teachers and administrators and like, is everyone really? I mean, no offense, is everyone really that important that they need to have a cellphone? Not minimizing their status or anything, but...
Well, and I think we have different makes and models, but I know your custodial crew and the, and maintenance all need to be kind of contacted at any time. So there are people who really are needed to be on call.
Okay.
But that's what we're taking a look at.
Okay.
And I probably will try to find out more about people who probably don't want to use the phone, right?
Yeah, like an electronic bow and chain, I guess.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the postage machines, again, you know, it's costing us $6,600 for each one. Can we just have one on that campus with the courier we have and just consolidate? I don't even know how much we send out via postage anymore, but I think that's a reasonable conversation to have.
What was that postage bill last year, roughly?
Last year?
With this last budget year, what was the actual postage?
I'd have to look that up. We're doing less and less with postage, you know?
You're going to laugh at me, but I buy postage stamps at 40 cents to 50 cents on the dollar. And if we're willing to lick stamps, we can cut our postage bill by nearly half.
Yeah. We're doing less and less, but I can find out what the cost is.
If it's worthwhile, let me know.
And there's the cost of the person licking the stamp.
Well, we'll buy them a sponge, buy them a sponge.
Word of ed member volunteer.
Yeah, I know.
I moved years ago from a meter to like something like stamps.com. I get a penny off, you know, what the regular postage would be, but I just, it wasn't worth having the machine, because I also do less and less in terms of mailing. But I need to have, needing people to mail, it's got to look, you know, professional, not just, you know, yet another picture of a stamp or something, you know, the flag or something like that, nothing wrong with the flag. But I think, have we ever used anything like an online postage meter? I mean, it runs me fifteen bucks a month to have it, so.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of just getting rid of the postage machines altogether. I mean, we are at the point now where technology allows us to print.
Yeah, well, we have parent square, and I think we can attach documents in parent square. So, that is something we can certainly look into.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to look at every efficiency, you know. We can't leave anything, any stone unturned.
The next group of items, we really looked carefully with all of our grants that we have, and we were able to move quite a bit into some of these grants that are already existing that have these areas, you know, whether it's professional learning, whether it's partnerships like the Nature Center, the Amistad Program, Project O, multilingual, we have a grant called Title III that is really all about that, and a bilingual grant. So, we were able to move all of those area, the three twenty-ones and the three twenty-twos into grants, which was really some efficiencies. And as I prepare the 2024 DODIA grant, hoping that, you know, that our federal government will continue to support that initiative, you know, we're really looking at things that are like professional learning and our partnerships to continue and sustain this good work we're doing in all of our schools, so.
Good question.
Adrian and then Ian.
I was just going to say, so if we're moving stuff, I mean, I saw in this page and the next page, a lot of stuff to move into DODIA. What are we losing? Because presumably, if we get, you know, a hundred dollars from DODIA and we just move a bunch of stuff into that category, you know, we move fifty dollars into that category, then we only have fifty dollars left to spend on.
So, the DODIA in particular, this past grant that we had, there was one that was a STEM grant for math materials, so that's where the DreamBox could come in. And then the other one is for partnerships. So, the partnerships were already in there. So, those will be able to be covering the partnerships that we have here.
All right. And then separately, just with DreamBox, that, I don't know how, when we would go into this, but, I mean, our math scores in middle school went down by like three percent. And I know they said that there was some research that said DreamBox worked, but I haven't heard as much good from the district. So, can we just evaluate?
We are.
If that's even worth continuing.
We've had a study done, and the middle school was not using DreamBox, but now they are. So, it's going to be interesting this year to see if it's picked up the scores, because their usage is much better this year.
How much do we spend on DreamBox?
I don't know. I'd have to look at that. It's a district-wide program, so we really have it K through eight. And then there's, it also has an algebra component for usage at the high school as well.
Yeah, it's about forty thousand dollars.
A year? Yeah. Do we, do we have any feel for what the teachers feel about that?
The feedback we're getting is very positive. Again, this is, I think Susan was just saying, this is the first year where they've sort of.
In middle school.
Set some goals and as approximately, you know, how many lessons students should be completing each week. And we're starting to, we've been looking all year at what that means in terms of their success on different, you know, in IAB's different assessments and correlating that to how many lessons they're doing in DreamBox. So, we are evaluating that, too, because I realize that that's a high-ticket item, and we want to make sure that we're getting what we want from it. So far, it's been pretty positive in terms of what the teachers and students are saying about it. But we want to check to make sure that we're getting the results that we want. That's not going to happen in a half a year.
Yeah.
But we're going to, you know, we're going to continue to look at that throughout this year and probably into next year.
I mean, that, it is a computer-based program, right? That limits teacher interaction.
I wouldn't say that. They've used, they've used it as an instructional tool, too.
They've done it in different ways, but yes.
Yeah, but it's basically less direct instruction from a teacher, where they're being instructed from a computer. I was just under the understanding that that stuff generally didn't work as well, but.
It's adaptive, too. So, it adapts to where they are.
Maybe we can talk about that later then, if it's not going to change for this year.
Want to clarify, if you allow me? I had the same question, at least I think I had the same question as Adrian has. So, let me rephrase it, because I don't think I got the answer from you that I was hoping to get.
Matt, you might perform maybe.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you very much. So, the question was, if we had not had the need to move this from our budget onto the DODIA grant, what would we have used that equal amount of money to do? It's a zero-sum game, it's a zero-sum game when you have a grant. And if you move something into it, there's something else you're not able to find.
Professional development in mathematics. And this is professional development in mathematics.
So, we're going to have the same outcomes as we would if we hadn't moved it?
Yeah.
You're a magician.
Well, I mean, you know.
Well, there are a lot of other things, though, that move into DODIA, so.
No, but this is, happens to be a STEM grant, and that the objective was the professional development in mathematics, so. And that's what, you know, this, it really is important that the teachers know how to use the tool and have the professional learning so that they can use it the best way. So, it doesn't just, you know, interact with the child, that the teacher's very much aware of it, too, how to use it best.
This whole subject of conversation ties back into one of my requests, where I wanted, and I think the whole board should be able to see and discuss the NIASC survey from 2022 to 2023. New England Association of Schools and Colleges Accreditation did a survey of the student body and the teachers. Also, the software audit that was mentioned last week. I was on the understanding that we should have received that on Friday.
Actually, Dr. Phil's going to share a little bit of that tonight.
Okay. Well, that's something, you know, again, with the documentation, it's, these are things I'm asking for, because I like to have my time with it. You know, it's where I can review the whole document on my own time and then develop my questions.
Well, he's going to go over a review of some of the software, too.
And the third thing is the staff and student surveys. That's an annual thing, right? Not the NIASC stuff, but in-house.
Right, that was done last spring.
Okay, so those three things, I think we need to have in hand so we can kind of get a better sense of the context of like, you know, what software is really resonating with the students and the staff.
Well, the survey that we're speaking of is a culture climate survey. So, that doesn't have anything necessarily about software, budget.
Or budget, for that matter. You know, then the software survey, and I can show you examples after we sort of get to the bottom of this list, but it was more to get a feel for what they're using. Do they see engagement? A lot of qualitative data, you know, do they see the kids engaged? Is there something that they would like that they don't have? And then we sort of make decisions based off of that. We can't, we, you know.
How well is it being used?
And how well it's being used. And of course, we cross-reference that with the usage data. We've done usage studies more on the big-ticket items rather than the, like the DreamBox, the Lexi, and that's what I was planning on showing in a little bit. You know, we make no promises to staff. I mean, they realize that there's budgetary limitations on the software, and we can't, you know, a lot of the software that we're, you know, some of our teachers are using are free versions. We're trying to get a track on that, because we want to make sure everything passes through our data privacy. In fact, you know, so the survey serves a lot of purposes, mostly to gather information about what they're seeing and what the kids are responding to. The other half, like Adrian was getting at, was not just what people like to use and what is engaging, but also what is getting the results that we want. That takes a little bit longer to do, because we don't want to make a snap judgment after one year on a piece of software. But so, I don't know. I mean, I could share some of that now, if it's the right time.
I would say, let's get through the list first, and then we can go back to that.
If I can just, just a little clarification for Ian. The portion of that, that survey was given to the board in August. The portion that I was referring to in the last meeting was just teacher comments section of that survey. There was a few teacher comments, but I think it was just a summary of teacher comments. And at that time, one of the board members requested all of the teacher comments. So, that, I think, is what we were hoping to get.
From the climate or from the?
From the climate survey that was given in August, or that was given to the board in August. So, it would have been last spring's climate survey.
Yeah. I remember we talked about that. I mean, is that a budget-related request? I mean, I'm just.
It is in my mind, because it's a grand context, I think, you know. Like, not all budget items are strict monetary. There's also contextual, like as far as like, you know, what's the effect? What's, you know, what's people's sense of like how well these things work? You know, what sort of programming is taking root and getting traction? And what sort of programming is not?
We didn't ask those questions in the survey.
So, do we survey that?
It's a culture and climate survey, right?
Yes, correct.
I think we did put up the results of the culture and climate survey on the frequently asked questions.
Yeah, but not that, not that specific part, the teacher comments.
There were some teacher comments on there, too.
There were.
Well, yeah, the ones that were given in August, but not all of them that were asked for. So, that's, I thought, what we were getting when we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, but.
That was the list that they were redacting, they were going back and redacting the names from?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that no.
All right, so you're working on that still, or?
I would have to find it.
No, I mean, that's been, that was done, I mean, that was done back when it was requested, so. I mean, I could, I can get that.
So, it was done? Somebody did go out and redact any?
I think it was done.
All right.
That's my, just finding the file.
We've been a little busy right now doing budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
And the NIASC survey?
I just requested it from Matt. He has it. He'll get it for the frequently asked questions. We'll put it up.
And the report's available on the, it should still be available on the Fitch.
NIASC reports on, available on the?
It was on the website.
Yeah. I'll check, since we, I know we redid the websites this year, but that should have been carried over.
Yeah, I mean, if you could just send a link to it, that'd be helpful to, you know. Sometimes navigating the website is a little challenging, so. If you know where to find it, just, you know, just expedite the matter.
Did you send that to us, Al?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would assume any requests here are for everyone, right?
Definitely.
Please.
Okay. So, I'm a little bit more than halfway down. There's two that go hand in hand, you know, to round reducing district PD and workshops, as well as the prep for workshops and strategic planning. And I put on the side, there's contractual prep time. And I think we have to do some research, because, you know, if we reduce the prep time for workshops, there's literally not much money left. So, I'm not sure how that plays into some of the contractual obligations, as well as how many PDs need to happen, what those workshop needs to have, but.
And can I just explain here? One of the real benefits that we have in Groton is that we have teachers and teacher leaders who are highly skilled and highly trained, and they're very much appreciated and respected by colleagues. So, sometimes bringing someone from the outside in, we do. But sometimes it's just as good to have our teacher leaders to work with our teachers, you know, and in groups to lead the work. So, we don't pay them for the professional development experience. We pay them for their planning. And I think it's two hours for the planning of an event. So, that's something that is in the contract, and it's really a valuable part of professional learning aspect. So, we really have to be careful not to take too much out of that. I think probably looking back, Phil, to see this past year, the past couple of years of what that cost was, we can kind of see that we're not tapping into it too heavily.
Again, Dave, are you controlling the screen?
Yeah.
Because at one point, we saw the remote members. I know they're not shy, and will probably.
I have to stop sharing to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's Rob.
I know they're not shy, but I just want to make sure that we're not missing any hands raised, so, that's all.
They have their cameras off.
Okay, all right. Yeah. I just want to.
You don't want me driving.
Be aware of our remote members.
Mark, you let us know if you see a hand go up.
Yeah, that would help, too. Thank you.
I will. The next one, we had a small amount, three thousand dollars in for mentor supplies as part of the mentor program. We would just move that to the new DOD grant.
Implement that with the IDEA grant, because I do have some funds in the grant for instructional supplies.
So, we're not losing any instructional supplies for our students. It's just coming from a different bucket.
So, all of that will be offset from a grant?
IDEA.
Yeah, we can't supplant the board's budget. We can only supplement through the grants. So, it will be, it will be a little bit less than the balance.
All right, so we're not, so kids aren't going to lose any materials they need? All right.
So, the next one, professional materials, really goes with the workshops and the PD. You know, it's usually money we need for some of the PD days. Could be even all the way down to flip charts, for that matter. So, there's sort of a correlation. It's about ten percent of the other two. There's really not much money on that line, so it's a little nerve-wracking to get down to this level, but it is what it is. The next one, professional services. So, this is, this is sort of a big category, if you think about it, if you look at your book. So, this is where things like Belfour went into this year, who helped us with some of the water mitigation. If we need any assistance whatsoever, like with Sam's team in terms of architect for building changes, any mechanical assistance in terms of expertise, that would go in there. It also spans across Clint's organization in terms of web posting and who we use for some of the technology services that we have as well. But really, taking the thirty out brings us down to, you know, some money for Sam in case we do need it for building advice and/or mechanical advice. But, you know, you just wouldn't have money in there for any big architectural moves. You wouldn't have any money in there for any further enrollment type of understanding or studies, if we need to do something like that. It would simply be Clint's technology professional services plus a little bit for Sam, and that's it. So, it's kind of a rough number there, because there's just a lot that goes into this category. Dues was eight eleven for five hundred. Oh, let me point that, I mean, Phil, I think that one came from you. But I thought maybe I'd kind of give, share with you. I think there's a question about cave dues. I don't know when this was.
Yeah, that was me.
Couple of months or so, or a couple of meetings ago. So.
Cave caps and NSBA.
Yep, so cave, in that line, so the eight twelve, eight ten that you were looking for, it's just cave. So, we don't pay for the, I think it's sort of the National Association of School Boards. They haven't paid for that since 2016. So, that line only contains cave. It's twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty, to be precise.
And how much do we pay for caps?
Caps, yep. Just give me one second.
He says for cave was twenty-one thousand?
Eight forty.
Eight forty?
Yep.
But the estimated savings here says five hundred. Am I reading that correctly?
That's for eight eleven, yep. So, caps. One second here, Adrian. Looks like at least last year was four thousand seven hundred and twenty-two. What was the other one? Did you have a third one? That was it?
There's the NSBA, but if you're saying we're not being.
We haven't paid that since, we went all the way back to 2016.
Okay.
Yep.
Just as a thought exercise, what would happen if we skipped out of cave for a year? I mean, we have a lot of material from them already. A lot of stuff we can use as reference. Can we jump a year?
One of the major concerns there is the policy service. So, we could subscribe to a policy service through an alternate, such as a law firm, or, you know, I suppose.
That would cost us much more money.
Yeah, we'd have to shop that out. But one of the, I think one of the major things, in addition to the professional development that cave provides and the fact that, you know, they're on call. I know several members who pick up the phone, call, or email for advice on issues is the, is the policy service.
And the legislation updates, right.
Updates. So, it definitely would be something that the board, you know, could consider. And I think we should look at what alternate, you know, policy services are there.
And maybe Susan should probably speak to this, but what does CAPS offer?
CAPS also works with the superintendents to make sure we're abreast of legislation. The governor's just put out his, you know, budget, and so many of us have written testimony looking at education budget that was really cut drastically. And some of these legislations, you know, are unfunded. Most of them are. So, really, just to have a voice and to have, you know, that support with legislation and policy, because that's a big job of the superintendent working with her board to make sure that we have our policy. So, it really is, and they do a lot of things together, the two. So, for me, it's a very valuable.
I'm going to recognize Bev.
Thank you, Jay. Me personally, I would be opposed to dropping out from cave. I think they provide so many services to school districts. It would be a shame not to be part of that organization.
And also, CAPS does a lot with professional development. And also, CAPS does a lot with professional development. They partnered with the state for the science of reading masterclass, and that's a big reason why we're involved this year.
Yeah.
Well, again, to be clear, like my suggestion for the thought experiment would be just for a temporary clause, you know, for a year or two, depending on, you know, how we feel situated with our policy and our legislation, legislative, legislative updates. You know, I'd be curious to reach out to some other boards of ed to see, you know, if there's boards of ed in the area that, that do not use CAE or CAPS, you know, how do they manage their situations?
I can certainly turn to the chair group and ask them.
I'd be curious to hear their response. Thank you.
I'd be curious, too, but again, I'm against that, and I just want to make that known. I think they provide a valuable service to us. Even for dropping out a year or two, I don't think that's a good idea. At this time when we need to advocate for public education, that's one of the biggest things they do.
I would support Beverly's position.
Jay?
Okay. Yes, Dean?
Okay, so we pay 21 something for CAE, right? That's what I heard. What do we pay for CAPS?
47.
47.
47.
4700.
Okay. Are there different levels of membership? Like a bronze, silver, gold, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Platinum for us.
Hey, Dean, it's different.
Do we, do we pay extra to be members of specific committees, for example? I mean, is it a?
You didn't see my old car, though.
It's a little bit of an all-in-one thing in there, or is just you're, you're charged a fee based on something? Just what, what do we, what do we, what was the fee based on? Do we know what the 21,000 is based on, or even the 4,000 is based on?
Maybe, maybe Beverly can address this, but I thought there was a sliding scale. I could be conflating this with something else with regard to the size of the district. But we can definitely find out. I can make a phone call tomorrow and find out.
I think that is true, Dean. And the only way, I mean, Jay, Dean, the only way they have different levels is how much you contribute as an outside organization. So if you're Shipman and Goodman, you might be a gold level because you contribute money to CAE and so forth. But it doesn't happen for school districts.
I see.
The next one below that is, I just called it sort of a take textbook inventory. You know, the budget has been increasing for textbooks. It was increasing again this year, up another 5,000 from last year. So my suggestion was to go back out and engage some of the principals and take an inventory of the textbooks needed before we start to bake an additional increase in our budget for textbooks. And I'm just not that close to it, but it just seemed to me like for three years in a row, if textbook costs keep going up, is when, when do we start to recycle?
New textbooks go through the process of curriculum development. So if we're authorizing a new textbook for a new course, that has to go all the way through the process that we have in curriculum and instruction. So these are mostly textbooks that, you know, they might have a new date of publication, but they, they typically are the same textbooks that, you know, they're, I guess, replacing. So we'd have to look at that because sometimes you'll find closets that there are extra textbooks in. So I think we can do a better job, like finding out how many textbooks we actually have.
When we switch to, I'm sorry. When we switch from one mathematics textbook to another because there's a substantive need to change, for example.
Right.
Is there any residual value in the old textbook that we can find a place to monetize a little bit back?
We have done that in the past. We've looked for companies that have taken textbooks, but we're not seeing that as many are doing that anymore. I think the shipping cost is such a feature that it's really hard. But we've offered it to libraries and we've put it out. There's a specialized process in the town. If something, you know, to go through to see if something is really truly obsolete or not. And if it's not, then there's, I guess, a bidding process that we put, like technology goes through this process in auction. So, you know, we really are following the guidelines of the town when it comes to that.
Jay?
Dean?
So on this line item, probably some of the other ones as well, so take, take textbook inventory, you've got negative $25,000, right? If I were to look at the, all the lines that are marked 640 in my budget materials, and look at the increase column and add that number up, how does that compare with the $25,000? Does that add up to $25,000? I'm sort of doing it manually now, but.
No, so the increase is 5,000. We were just suggesting we would take it down 25,000.
Okay, I only.
It would be more than what the increase is, obviously.
Yeah, I, I ask because the, under 640.
Just go to your object code if you have your object code.
Yeah, no, I'm on, so for example, under function 1101, elementary, pre-K to five, under line 640 texts, there is a proposed $14,200 increase. So that's, that starts the ball rolling right there. That's why I was wondering if I were to look at this number on every function code. It appears.
No, because there's some that go the opposite way as well, I think.
Oh, there are some reductions as well.
So just in aggregate, it's the 5,000.
All right. Ah, just curious.
So the next one was a, you know, sort of a broad category. I know there's been some work on reevaluating all the software in the district, and we came up with a number of $41,000 in savings there. I don't know if Clint's on, or?
Well, I could speak to that, too, and Clint and I sort of looked over these, again, these are, you know, in the, in the vein of not affecting things that our students are, you know, need, you know, for teaching and learning. You know, there's the Learn platform that we have. That was the, that accounts for $21,000. That, that was sort of an organizational software that we used on our end and on Clint's end to keep track of the different programs. We have the contractual renewal dates and that sort of thing. And we, we figured that would be an area that we could find other ways to, to do that without the Learn platform. School Dude is another piece of software that, right now, I'm not sure, are we using it strictly for custodial?
Work orders.
Work orders. And we were thinking that there's another, and again, if Clint's on, he can, he can chime in, but there was other ways for us to.
I'm happy to.
We hear you, but we don't see you.
Sorry, we have two separate ticketing systems. We have one that we use for IT, Power School Transportation, then a separate one for, for maintenance. We're, we're dropping the maintenance, proposing to drop the maintenance and add that to the other system that we use for those other three functions.
So you're consolidating and saving money at the same time?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Another software, you know, that we use is Turn It In. That was something that we, we got, I'm not sure, I'm sure that's been here since before I got here, but it's a way for students to submit papers in order to check for cheating, basically, you know, for.
Plagiarism?
Thank you, plagiarism. And there's, there's different ways to do that now. And even these days, a quick Google search on any, on any section of a paper could probably produce enough evidence for that. So that, that is another $5,000 on that line item. And then the last one is, is Naviance. That's something that's used on our high school. We have in the past purchased a, a middle school component that, that is not used. So the, the proposal is to get, just to get rid of that middle school component, and that would save.
And I think, too, with the work that we've done with our DODA partners across this country, DODA is really saying there's something that's much more updated with career pathways for middle school and high school, I think even elementary. And Clint, are you still on to remember the name of that product that we're going to be investigating?
School Links?
School Links.
Yeah.
Schools.
So not that we're going to take that away from the high school kids yet, because they, we really have kids who are juniors and seniors who've been using Naviance, and it's really effective for, you know, as they get ready for college and career. But just to start maybe with the middle school and move up with that, that new program instead. So we're taking out the middle school component that has not been used in Naviance. And then we hope this other product will be a better fit.
Right. I have a note here, grant fund School Links for future and keep Naviance for high school, you know, until these kids graduate out. So that those, those one, two, three, four items add up to that 41,000.
And that's an ongoing process, though?
Yep, we're continuing to, you know, those are the ones we identified right off the bat, and again, we're going to. Again, when I, I could share. If you want to, let me share my screen real quick.
While you're sharing that, we can kind of go on down and finish this up about the moving instructional technology piece. That was a specialized piece of software, Denise, that you're putting in IDEA.
Sure.
That was TeachTown for our ABA students.
Yep, that's a, that's an online program we use in our special needs classrooms. And we're going to move that to IDEA grant because we have some efficiencies that we've been able to find through our, our IEP program, which is now paid for by the state. We'll also have some efficiencies with the software program we currently purchase if we go to School Links. This module that we use is built into School Links. So we'll be able to have some efficiencies to cover the TeachTown bill through IDEA. So we'll still have it.
And then we talked about long-term looking into the state plan for efficiencies with healthcare. And then we still have Pleasant Valley for our, you know, robotics team. We're really looking at space in the high school and at Mary Morrison so that we don't have to heat and provide electricity, PV, and we get kids, I would love for them to be back at the high school. There's this big garage that I have my eye on that needs to be cleaned out, but to get the robotics team back at the high school with the appropriate space, I think, would be ideal. And then that could beef up our whole manufacturing center, which is really ideal. So, you know, Sam and I are, we've taken walks through, if anybody wants to walk through the vintage wing, I'll take you for a trip, you know, to see it. But it would, I think it would really be an enhancement for our students to have it right there. And then we don't have to pay for the electricity and heat and PV and get them ready if the town wants to sell it for something, you know?
Well, they actually just posted a notice.
Yeah.
I believe of a public hearing.
There's a public hearing on March 5th for Pleasant Valley and Groton.
So.
So that they're going back into the process for an RFP.
Yeah, so do we know what?
Times of the essence, robotics back.
Right.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we need to move them back, and do we know? I noticed the line's blank at the moment, but do we know what we're paying the town?
No, I have got, I, this is like a 24-hour thing. I've just got to do some research on this one.
Okay.
What, Pleasant Valley? Is it heat and electricity, right? Don't we have to keep it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back and get some of those bills.
Probably custodial. There's probably a few things that we were doing that could save, be saved.
Yeah, bringing that back to the high school would be.
Ideal.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where we are. I was just going to share a couple of screens just to show you sort of what we're looking at, just to go back to that software line for just a second. You know, for instance, this is, this is DreamBox that we were talking about, right? This is the sort of things we look at, you know, per school. You can really see that the, the percentage of students locking, you know, logging in is extremely high. So, so we have high usage for this one. And we break it down by school. We also break it down by grade. Obviously, you can see this is a, this is not a, a senior high school, you know, we do use it.
It's more for intervention.
Yeah, in some of our intervention, in special ed. But so that's one angle we look at when we look at software. And I'll share you sort of another one that's on the opposite end of the spectrum, which is, you know, for instance, our, our Lexia. You know, this is a software, again, which you could see is, you know, this is the Lexia power up. You could see it's, it's very low in terms of usage. It's mostly used, again, for intervention at our middle school. But we're exploring, hey, you know, why do we need so many licenses if we're only using it for 218? So those are other ways we can, you know, build efficiency. So again, we use, we look at usage, and we also, you know, again, are going to look at how are these kids doing? These 218 kids at the middle school, are they benefiting at all from using this Lexia? Are we seeing improvement in their classrooms, on their test scores, that sort of thing? So that, that's the other half of it.
Special ed uses that as well.
Yeah, but these are the types of reports we look at. Again, I just pulled the ones that were sort of our bigger ticket items rather than the smaller ones. But I can provide whatever.
I think it would be beneficial to get some narrative attached to that, too, from, like, as a survey, to see, you know, how the students and the staff feel about using the software.
I can tell you that this software, Lexia, is not being used as much as in the past because we've integrated the Hagerty and the Ufly. So they're really getting their phonics instruction through the new curriculum we've introduced rather than Lexia.
And Lexia is also one of those adaptive technologies. And I, when I first got here, I saw a lot of little children using that. And I, I hate to say it, but it might have been, you know, they also had phonics lessons, but now they really have delved into the science of reading, and I think it's much better being taught by the teacher.
Right, and back to Adrian's point, I was going to say, it's, it's definitely teacher-student interactive as, as opposed to.
And now they really don't have time to do it because they're so engaged in the teaching and learning that they're having in person, so.
I was just going to put out there, and in terms of efficiencies, I, I personally feel that the teachers can probably give us the most information as far as what they think works and what doesn't.
That's why we surveyed them.
Yeah, so I would, I would love to see if there's a way, if teachers are surveying on all of these different programs that were used, especially if there's some way to make it anonymous so they didn't feel like they were, you know.
Yeah, it was anonymous.
Somebody else that's been pushing it. But yeah.
We didn't have those results. We'll definitely share them. We're going to be putting them up on the frequently asked questions. But the teachers were very honest about telling us what was working and what wasn't, and the things that they, they liked and didn't have anymore. There were some things that they had during COVID that they really appreciated, and we had to cut back on, so they were asking for some of that again. They love Mystery Science, for instance. It really ties in. Ben Moon had found that. So there were some things that we've initiated that they really spoke highly of.
When can we expect to see that on the FAQ document?
Just waiting for Phil and, and to put it up.
Tomorrow.
And, you know, back to Denise's point, we're also trying to find out, we don't want to be doing two, two, you know, doing the same thing with two different pieces of software. So we're trying to avoid the duplicity of, of the function, so.
Especially with resources like this. We really have to be careful.
Right. As you can imagine, during COVID, you know, we got a lot of programs for free. Or for very low fees.
Yep.
And then once we got into them, people liked them.
These companies were so smart.
They jacked it back up. Good business, I guess. Bad for us.
All right.
How about you, still sharing?
So that was, that was the initial list of what I considered non-personnel efficiencies, which you can see is, you know, almost $2.3 million. And then the second page of your handout gets into some of the personnel. So the first one is reducing clerical overtime. So we'd still retain custodial maintenance overtime, but essentially anyone outside of that, and technicians for that matter, if there's an emergency. But any, anyone outside of that, there would not be any overtime. We'd also, you know, these two go together, but I think I mentioned to you, at least with my presentation, I had some money in there for temp help to potentially move data if we moved to a different budgeting process. So we'd move, we'd eliminate the temp help for myself as well as IT. IT had some, an estimate in there to hopefully have a few interns, but we'd eliminate those, too. The third one is, or fourth one, sorry, is reducing one maintenance resource.
And that's through attrition, through a retirement, I think.
The next two around.
What does that, what does that mean, Dave? Does that mean one maintenance personnel? One maintenance person you don't need anymore?
That's one, yeah, that's one less maintenance person.
It was a, I think it was a retirement. So it's through attrition, and then, you know, we have some other people that have some of those qualifications that will be able to take that on.
Okay. Thank you.
The next two around clerical. Just a suggestion for a part-time clerical as well as a full-time clerical. And I've given you the estimates there. Both of those are around central office. Next one is change the communication specialist really from a 1-0 to a .5 in operations and move half to a grant opportunity. The next one is reducing two school admin assistants. Currently have about 19 of those across the seven schools. Then we're into the building subs. We have 38 building subs currently.
And those are our permanent building subs, which we really needed during COVID. It was harder to get the daily subs, but we're back to, you know, being able to have our building subs, but also hiring some daily subs as well when we need them.
I've got, I'll go to two questions really quick. First, the subs. So if we cut those permanent subs, we are still going to need daily subs, so they're still going to cost us money, right? So it's not necessarily going to be.
But they're less money, and we would, we would only hire them when we needed them. A building sub. I mean, we're finding that, you know, during COVID, it was really hard to cover our bases. And even, even until last year, this year is still not easy because people are still getting sick, you know, between RSV and COVID and flu. And so when people are out sick, you know, especially teachers, you have to put someone in the classroom. But it does seem like it's gotten a little better when we look at our attendance data for the staff.
All right. I mean, is that fair?
We're hopeful that.
Is that fair to, to just request that that be looked into a little bit, just so we know?
No, that's fair.
If that, if we're going to cut that 600, I mean, clearly there's going to be more. But is it going to be $10,000 or $100,000 or $300,000?
Right.
So I guess just to have a little bit more clarity that that's just not moving money around. And then the communication specialist, is that, is that number including benefits or do we pay benefits on top of that?
This, this is just salary and taxes. So it wouldn't include like health benefits.
All right.
Because we don't really do an allocation model like that, not yet.
All right, so everywhere when we see a salary, it is just salary.
Yeah.
With taxes, though, taxes are a big lift.
Taxes on the next line, yeah.
Yeah.
So it, does this mean that if we're going to go get a new grant for that 42823? Or we're going to?
We had actually had that position in some of the sustaining title grants because it's also, the person is communication, but also family engagement, lottery and enrollment. So has, wears multiple hats, so that because of that, we were able to put her back into the grant. I think it was the title grant.
So is it offsetting something else in that grant? Because that's a lot of money. So is that 42,000 offsetting a different position or a different program?
In any title grant, you have to have the family engagement piece, so that's what it would be doing. It would be providing that.
So, so, but so that's, we have somebody else doing that right now? Family engagement?
No, we don't at this time. So we, it's a need in the title grant.
Some of the funds go to their, their family nights, you know, their curriculum nights, which we, I mean.
Yeah, but that's in their supply costs, so that wouldn't be.
What does that position do anyway? Communication specialist, if you don't mind.
I think we have a, a job description, but, you know, there's multiple layers to that. They really work in teaching and learning, they work with the enrollment and the office. So it's really the face of, you know, Groton, when someone comes in, new to town, it's someone who can work with families to make sure that they understand the lottery process and, and the enrollment process. So that front office only has really two people in it, so it's really a conduit to that. And also all of the.
A lot of communications. Communication, you know.
A lot of communication.
Most events at, at the different schools run through the, the communications person and she helps develop any kind of product that they need to get out to parents and that sort of thing. What I, what I really want to do, and what I can do again, you know, after this meeting, is share the, the strategic communications plan that the Board of Ed's Communication Committee came up with, and Matthew, feel free to, you know, to jump in here as well. We worked all last year as a subcommittee to develop this plan. Essentially, the plan is a, a blueprint for the Communication Director.
Yeah.
So I think once you get a look at it, you, that'll give you a greater understanding of the capacity of her.
We could actually put that on a frequently asked question too, to get, make sure that plan is there.
Yeah.
And I think the job description also is going up with that, so.
I was going to suggest that if we have a couple of more hard copies or electronic copies, depending on the new members' preference, that they take a look at it. It is aspirational to do everything in the plan. Could consume more time and more money than we have available, but it does, is a blueprint for what we would like to do over time.
Right. I think a presentation too, so you will really get a better handle on that work.
The other piece I'd like to just mention is that this position has become a lightning rod, as somebody used an expression, because this person has been here for a number of years doing a variety of functions. So when we said we were moving it over to our budget, in fact, at least as I perceive it, a good share of that 85,000, which included the benefits, was already being spent. We were not adding something new, we were just moving it around, or moving a part of it around. Is that, is that an accurate description?
Yeah, and I think we, we can do it in this way to reduce our operations cost.
Well, and the proposal also was to, to increase the FTE. So we're going to basically be asking her to continue to do what she's doing at, at the behalf FTE, right?
No, I mean, she'll, she'll continue. She's not a full, I mean, she is full-time now, so she will continue doing all the different roles, but part of it will be in grants for the family engagement piece and then part of it will be in communication.
Okay.
So we're just disaggregating.
I have to give it through paychecks every period.
So it's going to be a, a one-half FTE add rather than a one FTE add to our budget?
Yes.
Right, exactly.
And then, and this grant is, we're sure about that? That we can do that?
Yep.
Susan, how long is the grant for? Is it a one-year grant?
It's an annual grant that we get, Beverly. It's one that comes every year.
Categorical.
Okay.
Categorical. Not competitive.
So next year, we have to hope that if we keep the communication specialist at a point, at a one, you know, total, that we have to continue to look for a grant to.
Well, it is one that comes every.
Offset.
Yeah, it comes every year and it does have that piece of, you know, community engagement and family engagement, so.
Jen?
I just want to understand, is it fair to say that this person in our current budget is 100% communications? And next year, in order to keep the person, she's going to be half, half her time is communication? And we've now given her additional duties of family and lottery?
No, she's always done that.
Okay.
She's always worn multiple hats.
Okay.
And if you see any good press in Groton, which we see a lot of, I mean, you know, the, that connection to the press, that connection in getting into the classroom and working with our principals is really, you know, and then the family messaging that I'm able to get out with the quarterly, School Matters. I mean, even if you see some of the video clips of the different holiday messaging, I mean, all of that. And she works very closely with Mark and Caitlin to get the photographs in, out to the public and to get the, you know, the slideshows and the movies. So there's a lot of different things that are happening.
But to your question, the registration and enrollment will not be new duties?
No.
Or she's been doing those all along?
She's been doing it all along, but we haven't really been charging it to a grant.
She was charged to a grant, that's why she's coming over. But now we're going to put her back in half of it in the grant.
We were saying we should, we should have left it as is.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's true.
But to your question, the registration and enrollment will not be new duties?
No.
Or she's been doing those all along?
She's been doing it all along, but we haven't really been charging it to a grant.
She was charged to a grant, that's why she's coming over. But now we're going to put her back in half of it in the grant.
We were saying we should, we should have left it as is.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's true.
So I'm on, fourth from the bottom, one is, excuse me, my voice, reduce one of the Fitch High School Guidance Counselors. You know, currently we have 13.6.
That was an additional person that was through the Joe Courtney grant, and we were going to try to put her in this budget. We're actually going to keep the person, but, but it's going to be a less FTE in the operation budget. So she'll be able to, I don't know if she'll end up at the middle school or the high school, but it's a, as a savings, but still we'll have the counselor in place.
Jen?
She's moving to a different grant?
No, she's, no. There, there was a Joe Courtney grant that allowed us to have an additional counselor to run career pathways.
Okay.
So that grant is running out. So we were hopeful to add in this position in the operating, but we don't need to. We're not going to lose the person.
Yeah.
But we're not going to be adding it to the grant either. There's going to be, through attrition, she'll just fill, fill space from, yeah. That's being left behind.
The next two were.
Can I, can I ask one question on guidance? This thing, this sheet we have here on Fitch says we have 7.6 in guidance.
So that's the extra, both the schools have six, and then we have a .6 at Fitch for the extra career. Because of the Joe Courtney grant, we had the additional one, which made it 7.6. She didn't have a caseload, but she was working on the career pathways.
Oh, so the current, the current 13.6 is both middle and high school?
Yes, yes. So now they'll be back to 12.6, which they always were before the Joe Courtney grant.
High school will go back to 6.6 and the middle school will stay at six.
Yeah.
All right.
So the next two were .5 program coordinator roles. Excuse me, I just separated those two. And the last one was around reducing, potentially reducing tutor hours by 30 minutes for each one of those, full-time tutors only.
Jen?
Can you go into what the program coordinator roles are, the high level? What are they coordinating? What programs? Just trying to understand.
So I think that that was on the teacher's side because of some of the coordinators were part-time, were able to do the coordination and then part-time teaching. But because of the way that we're running the schedule, I think the staff that we have will be able to do the teacher's side, so we'll only have .5 instead of a 1.0.
So they're coordinating the teachers' schedules?
No, no, no. They're coordinating for literacy and STEM.
Oh, okay.
So is, is someone, are we getting rid of a position or are people, somebody retiring there?
Just .5, just .5 of the position.
Someone's going from full-time to part-time?
Mm-hmm.
Two people are?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You have two.
And then, sorry, oh, one additional thing. How many hours, I should know this, but how many hours is a school day from when the buses get there to when the buses leave?
I have that one because of the IEPs. It depends on the level, it's different. But it's roughly between six and a third hours to six and three-quarter hours per day.
All right. All right. So, all right, so it's, but that's like when the main buses, you know, arrive and leave?
That's from the, the time school starts to the time school ends, it counts as a school day.
All right, so then you would have to add a little bit for the buses.
No, so for the, for the elementary, it's nine to 3:35.
All right, so six, yeah, so six, 6:35. And then presumably 10 or 15 minutes before school, 10 or 15 minutes after school.
Arrival, yeah.
So around seven hours a day is when there's kids there? I guess that's what I should ask.
Yeah, they're probably.
When are like the majority of the kids still at school, about seven hours in a day?
Probably.
I don't know, I wouldn't say seven hours, I'd say maybe.
Yeah, Beth is saying yes. Yeah. Especially with the buses.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably a pretty good estimate.
And right now, the, the tutors are working six and a half hours a day, is that correct? They're there for seven, but, but take a half hour lunch?
Correct.
So they're basically there when the, when the kids are there, right now?
Well, and we, you know, I know that you heard from some tutors that were taking kids off the bus and putting them on, but typically tutors are there for instruction. So their day starts once the kids have done lunch count and gotten in and done some morning work. And so it's really, you know, like 15 minutes on one end and 15 minutes on the other end of the day. They don't need to be doing the duties. We have other people who do that, so they're really there for instruction.
Yeah.
I mean, is there an option where tutors just get, could have, just have the option of working a little bit less? Are any interested in that?
They, they may be, I don't know. You know, we, we talked about, do we reduce, you know, reduce numbers? Or we reduce, you know, a little bit of time and be able to keep more tutors? So, you know, that, it's.
Is there some way we can get some data on, on like what the caseload of each tutor looks like?
Well, they do very different jobs, so.
It's understandable, but.
They really deliver instruction to small groups of students. So that could vary by, you know, the, what's being instructed during that part of the day. So they could have a larger group during the reading block, a smaller group during the math block. And then those groups change based on whether the students need that intervention for that unit. So if they, if, if it's a unit that they've mastered, then they don't work with the tutor. It's really more for intervention and special education.
So is there like some kind of scheduling master board where you kind of track where the tutors are? Or where they're supposed to be?
Well, the principals and the assistant principals really manage that in each building. Generally, they're assigned to a class and they assist a group of students in that classroom. But some of them work more broadly and work among a variety of classrooms throughout the day. It's really based on student need.
Yeah. I'm just looking for a way to try to capture that and get an understanding, again, of like, you know, how, you know, how much it resonates and grabs, like who's, you know, I mean, ostensibly, yes, like, you know, on-the-ground support, you know? But it's good to be able to understand like how, what that really looks like on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, and then we also have EL tutors. So the tutors work with different populations of students. Some of the tutors work with multi-language learners. Some of our SEL tutors provide intervention for social, emotional, behavioral reasons. And then some of our special ed tutors provide instruction academically.
And then you have math tutors and you have ELA tutors. But we do have a pretty highly structured SRBI process, which is our, our multi, you know, tiered systems of support is the new acronym, MTSS. And through that support, there's a lot of models where the tutor will be pushing into the classroom and be able to assist the teacher with small group instruction when they're doing their small group work. And then sometimes they'll pull them out.
Right.
Too, for a quieter setting. So that's all orchestrated in every school. There are, you know, definitely commonalities in this process, but every school manages that on their own. When I was the building principal, I did that work myself as a principal. So the grand total.
Do the tutors participate in staff surveys as well?
Oh, yeah, the whole staff participates. So we have paraprofessionals that participate and everyone participates, yeah.
So that will also be included in the survey that we're able to review in?
Yeah, I don't know that it identifies who the people are. I think it's really anonymous survey, so you wouldn't know.
Does it identify?
But it's by school, I think.
I'm trying to think, I think we do.
No.
No.
It's by school, I'm not sure.
Not by role?
By role, but I'll.
Certified and non-certified.
Just only certified, non-certified?
Yeah.
School and then certified, non-certified.
Okay.
So I'll recognize Matthew and then Jen.
Two easy questions. When the paraprofessionals came and visited us in the library, or actually, a little bit later, one of the letters, they said that the cuts could affect their ability to have a lunch. So if we reduce it by 30 minutes, will that affect their access?
No, they still have their lunch.
Good, I just wanted to get that. The second one is when I was subbing prior to being on the board, with the challenge of getting adequate subs, on several occasions, when I was called in for a half day, I'd get to a room and the person who was leading the room was a tutor. And the people inevitably did a good job, but they were frustrated because they weren't with the kids they wanted to be working with.
I know.
So I'm really hoping that we're not going to lose tutors because we, we cut this half hour. I don't know how you manage it, but I think at some point, and I don't know, this is, may, may not be the place to do it, but I want to come back to at some point, paraprofessionals so they can view themselves as professionals at a different level with a career rather than a job. And give them a affirmation that will help fill a part of their hearts and keep them with us as a retention.
We actually just met with the leadership team. We're going to be meeting with them every other month to really get their feedback. It was a really wonderful meeting and one of them had said, one of the leaders knows that we have a Grow Your Own program and wants to go back to school to be a teacher. So it was really delightful. So that is the kind of thing, to have that affirmation and to know that this is a. So that is the kind of thing, to have that affirmation and to know that this is a career pathway for a lot of them. And we have had many paraprofessionals that have taken advantage of our Grow Your Own program or even the Teacher and Resident Program that the state provides and, and then they get hired as teachers.
Are you reasonably comfortable that we'll be able to get enough subs so that we won't have to move tutors? I know there are no guarantees in life, but are you reasonably?
I'm hopeful that it is getting better, but there has been a lot of illness and not only physical illness, there have been lots of stressors. Our community really still struggles. Our children, I've said this before and I'll say it again, that we, you know, it goes back to Maslow's hierarchy, we got to take care of our people. It's that love and care and attention before teaching and learning can happen. So, you know, we really have to build this foundation and we have been working really hard and I, Phil and I are going and doing our coffee chats and we're hearing much more positive feedback this year than we did last year and the year before, even just going for those talks and just sitting there and listening. It's a difference and we continue. The principals all have it as a goal. That's what they really are focused on, is making sure.
Based off the.
Based on the survey results.
Talking about earlier, it was clear that culture issues, you know, really played a role in almost every building.
Yep.
So all the principals, and I think they shared that at the beginning of the year, had that as a major goal, you know, to, to help improve culture. And we are seeing that in these talks where people seem more, much more positive about what's going on in their buildings, so.
And they feel like they have a voice more. And that's what, Beth and I talk about that all the time. We go to breakfast and we, we talk about how we can make sure people are feeling actualized.
And thank you for being here, Beth. Sitting through these meetings. Well, we're trying to save on the heat.
Like I said.
Did you bring your fur tonight?
But I'm freezing.
It's been so long since I've been able to do this.
Jen.
Hello, young lady. Can I take my jacket?
Oh, thank you.
Something to think about, right? Like, in this other sheet that we haven't reviewed yet, tutors are approximately 40,000. So would the pain be less if we just reduce three tutors and then the remaining tutors don't get their time impacted? Something to consider. And I want to know how many tutors we had pre-COVID, the ARPESR? So, because that really is our base, right? The new base that we're comparing ourselves to is including the ARPESR funds. We need to go back to see where we were before ARPESR and understand that was the services that we could afford. We are in a tough environment and we may or may not be able to move forward with everything that's on this second sheet. So if I can, if we, the board, can have that information, it's just looking at something and not necessarily saying that you're going to act upon it, but it's something that we need to consider because that's the majority of the expenses that's coming through, the $2.2 million.
I think we should wrap up the page and go to that other page if you're ready, but just for you to know, this was a 3.5 efficiency and it did bring that number from 13.45 to 9.12.
With due respect, I'm not quite there because I'm not really sure I would, I want to touch the OPEP until I listened to the actuaries.
All right.
So the true savings we have on the first page is only 645,000 plus potentially the 1.2, so that's below 2 million.
Okay.
And a quick question about the, the program coordinator that, that FHS, that reduction, it says ELA position as a note there. Could you explain what that means?
That, that role needs to be replaced for someone who's taken on another job and we won't need to hire the teaching component, we just need the coordination component because we have enough staff that can cover that. We already have that staff in place.
I know this was asked, I think, from another member earlier, but what does the coordinator do?
So we have six through 12 coordination. I think I've described this before. When I first got here, we had probably six or eight coordinators for the whole district.
In this office.
In this office. These were put into place several years before COVID, I believe, and they are able to coordinate ELA, Humanities, and STEM, six through 12. It's really important that we have that articulation, six through 12, and that we have that level of coordination. We actually have a STEM and a ELA Humanities Coordinator K5 in our DODIA grant, so that we have now K through 12 articulation, which is so important, and they do a lot of work, everything from department meetings, doing the professional learning, meeting with teachers, meeting with, you know, literacy specialists and with all these initiatives and taking on especially the science of reading, elementary through middle school, it's really important that that kind of coordination is happening.
And they also do evaluation, correct?
They also do evaluation because they are, they have their O92s, so they're able to support. And with the, and one day, you'll have to listen to Phil because this was his dissertation on teacher evaluation and support.
You don't want to hear that.
You don't want to hear the dissertation, but he found that the state program that we had was really not doing what it needed to do and we are authorizing a new program and he and Beth are working side-by-side with Grotton Teaching and Learning Collaborative to create a much richer program where teachers are getting feedback really soon after they've, you know, had their observations, they're getting multiple observations by principals, and it's just working out so much better.
That should be finalized by the end of this year, so we will definitely.
But that's definitely something I want you all to hear about because you'll have to, you know, get the plan before we send it to the state. You'll have to hear it.
When you talk about coordinating STEM, ELA, are you talking about integrating curriculum in the subject matter so that there's crossover between the subjects?
That is an important thing that we do, but with the ELA, they're really working with the ELA teachers, with the humanities, they're working with both World Language and the Social Studies Department. And with STEM, that particular coordinator takes on math, science, and some of the robotics and the technology piece, so, you know, so they're doing all those different departments.
And they're also carrying .5 teaching load?
Well, that wouldn't happen with this because we have other people who are doing the coordinating.
But there are some, there are some.
It's always been .5, .5. But we do have the teachers.
Just a couple of more questions on the sheet. So there was going to be, I think I remember, 12 retirements. Are those taken into account here or are we just replacing or rehiring for those positions?
We're doing a schedule right now. We have already looked at our numbers and we've been able to carve out 6.5. I think that was on another sheet where the, we had seven coming in, but we were able to reduce about 6.5. But with this, you know, new work on the schedule, we'll see how those classes line up, especially at the middle school and high school. They have a little more leeway than the elementaries.
So, yeah, where are the, where are those retirements? Are they?
They're mostly at the middle school and high school. I don't think we have many elementar, I don't know of any elementary, special ed, speech. Yeah.
So we're going to hear more about that. I mean, how are we budgeting for that right now?
So I've already, I've already done what I could do, what I know I can do, which is the 6.5.
Is that in here?
That is on that sheet from the ARPESR closeout.
They're already in the, excuse me, they're already in the function codes.
That been reduced, 6.5.
Yeah.
All right, and then, one of them was on the sheet, so I'll wait. And then, in the meeting on Monday, Counselor Parker made some statement or assumption that our test scores were down and that, you know, are these positions really showing what's going on with our, or are they showing like increased test scores or something like that?
So I would say that we did take a dip at COVID, as did the whole rest of the country, and that was more related, I think, to the COVID, but we've started to come back up again. It'll be interesting to see what Sback is for this year. So we always look at student growth, so you really want to look at how kids are growing, no matter where they are on the continuum, you know, that that's really the biggest measure that we look at. But I do share state results. I think we do one a month. I think when we're going through the Sback results and we get out the data from the beginning, you know, we, we're getting the data now, sometimes in the summer, but it doesn't get released officially till usually September. And that's when I do the first overarching glance at Sback results and then the schools use it to really identify kids who need support, so, you know, who is really struggling and not meeting their goal, even with kids that are meeting the goal and exceeding the goal. We want to see growth all the way through for kids.
Well, I guess where I was going with that is can we have the, I know that all this stuff came out and was in, in the board in August or something like that.
You want that data?
Yeah, well, it would be nice to have some actual numbers to say that. We're holding with our derg, you know, because everybody really went down together, right? You know, and are we coming up slower? Are we coming up the same?
We have it over time. So we have it prior to COVID, we have it.
Yeah.
There were a couple of years where they didn't test, you know, those years of COVID. The, the March, I'll never forget that March date that we all went out and nobody got tested. And, and then the next year, we didn't get tested, I guess, or didn't, they couldn't get results. It was that hybrid model, so, but we do have, we do have, the data we have, I'll absolutely put out there for you.
Yeah, and, and just in comparison, so people can see, you know, how we are doing. And then the other thing, I know I emailed Phil a little bit on this, but, but the, the current DIBELS numbers, I mean, there was tests done in the fall and then there was tests done, I guess, a little over a month ago or something like that. And I believe all those numbers are in and I, I feel like the board, I mean, those tests are done so the teachers can make changes for each individual kid as, as the year goes, right? So it's going to be more effective in teaching, but I personally would like to see those and I'm sure the rest of the board, because there's been so much talk on the science of reading, we'd like to know, since we have like numbers three times a year plus the state test. Like, I think it would be great just to get an update, maybe a month after those tests are done.
So right now, the process is that we're working with our teachers with their DIBELS data. I think, I think your group just did it and looked at the data wall and then they're making some decisions instructionally, like you said, but the principals and the teachers need to, and all of our schools need to really do the deep dive because they've got to decide what instructional practices. And then what we typically do is share that data, bring the principals in, they like to talk about what are the strategies for moving kids forward and what are the things that are happening in intervention, so that you get a full picture of how data is, you know, it's just not a number, that we do something with the data. It's really important that we really instruct kids. And then the third time is really a charm because then you really see it over the course of the year. And so that's going to be exciting to share with you what happens by the time the, the spring hits, but we can certainly give you a glimpse of it.
We're just now sharing the data with the teachers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can get that in front of the board and then, and then really, again, like you said, at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So you can see all three.
Well, yeah, I mean, but clearly we've got, you know, the right-to-read legislation. We've got a lot of things that need to change by this summer and then by the summer after and we presumably have to budget for those changes. So, and like the number matters because those numbers are given, you know, how many kids are at or above, you know, where they should be at this time in the year. So just the base numbers without, I mean, if we have to wait a little while for every year analysis, that seems okay, but I think that us having the numbers.
But we want you to understand the numbers. So part of the teacher and me, after 43 years, is to make sure you really understand what they mean and, you know, they're, they, they mean different, there's different categories for these numbers, so we're looking at different parts of, of, you know, the speech and the phonics so that you can, you know, we want to share that with you so you understand it really clear.
Yeah, I mean, there's probably some people that would understand the numbers here.
Well, I mean, we'll do a full, we'll do a full breakdown. I think it should.
I just, I mean, you know how I feel. I feel like this, the right-to-read, the discussions on that have been pushed out longer than they should have been. So I just feel like withholding information that's there, I mean, it's pretty easy to give us and just say, we'll, we'll have more answers about it later. That seems reasonable.
Right, and like I said, it's just a matter of the teachers and principals seeing that data first and reviewing that data first and then it'll come right to the board. That's the only thing holding it up.
And budget, we've been a little busy.
Well, and.
I think we can do it in a COW in March, right?
Yeah, that's usually what we do. Always in the COW.
And in terms of, you were mentioning what needs to be done by this summer, the Hagerty and the Ufly have sort of satisfied the state's view of that partially met part, you know, that had to be done by the summer. So, so nothing additionally really has to be.
Geodes, we've just bought those.
And the geodes, which is, you know, the decodable texts that are going to be going into the classrooms. But, but to your question, yeah, what we do next year.
Yeah, but the base programs, using Teachers College and Fountas and Pennell, the state has clearly, the legislation clearly says that those aren't going to be accepted programs. So we need to replace those programs.
Except in those districts where they are accepting them.
They've only been partially accepted, correct? I don't think any, to my understanding from speaking to someone at the state was that the only, in July of '25, the only programs that are going to be, like, accepted are going to be the ones listed. So I think that the ones that were added were ones where districts put together a presentation that made it, that, you know, made their compendium look like it was fully following the science of reading.
Right, yeah, it was, that was interesting. All right, any other questions on that?
One comment on the, the tutors. I don't know if there's going to be attrition amongst the tutors, but one argument that could be made for having a certain number less than we have now is that the tutors who are here all have established relationships, not only with the administration and the other teachers, but with the kids. And it may be that the continuity of care for a few fewer people will produce the same results as introducing some new people who still have to learn the culture from scratch.
So what would your recommendation be?
Well, I guess I would ask them, I would ask our tutors if there was anybody thinking of going somewhere else, getting married, going to sail around the world on a sailboat and see if there is any internal attrition that would allow us to do this. And if there's not, maybe even a thank you incentive along the line of, don't have to wait for 20 years, we'll give you $500 if you say sayonara with a smile.
I will definitely talk to Lori Lapine because sometimes she has some ideas about how that all could work, too.
Far better than I am, she.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, you know, we can talk to our HR director, too.
We do do that each year, but it's a little bit later in the spring.
We do ask?
Yeah. We, we do an intent to return.
Oh, okay.
With all of our non-certified staff.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question about, are we offering an incentive? We used to do that to, to retire or to, I guess, to retire. Are we doing that or not?
I don't think we've done that, but we do have in the contract that they have to let us know at a certain time to be able to get their retirement.
There is a built-in incentive.
Built-in severance.
In the contract.
Yeah.
I know that we didn't do it. Say that, I guess.
If they advise by a certain date, it's built into the contract.
I see, okay. For that year, yes.
Jay?
Yes.
I've actually heard some stories, just anecdotes, of course, and not, not this district, but in some other districts where, sorry, I've heard stories from other districts in other times that where teachers who have years under their belt are approached by administration with the request that they think about, you know, just think about possibly retiring and the reaction hasn't always been positive. In fact, the reaction sometimes that I've heard has been negative, "Oh, you want me out? I'm not going anywhere."
Yeah, we don't do that.
All right, so I don't know if we had any experiences like that.
No, the state is actually encouraging retired teachers to come back and support the schools because of this, the teacher shortage.
Yeah.
Even I got that letter.
And when our teachers do retire, many times they are our tutors or they do other roles, they're really so valuable to us, you know, so.
Part-time.
Yeah, you think they know when to quit.
No, no.
Just in general, I mean, I would, there's a lot to consider here, so I hope that we have another meeting scheduled in the near future to follow up on a number of these things before we move on to the next page. of these things before we move on to the next page. But, you know, I did submit a number of FOI requests, and I think that data, that information that I asked in the packaging that I asked it, you know, framed as, I think that would help the whole board see the nuts and the bolts of the machine, you know, so we can kind of better understand how things relate to each other. So I would encourage, you know, that information to be brought forward sooner than later, so that we could use it in these deliberations. My experience working on vessels of various types and sorts, like, whenever there's a crisis of any kind, you know, diversity of thought is important, diversity of tactic is important. And you have some people who are more naturally prone to thinking in a macro scale, and some people more prone to thinking in a micro scale, and others more systemic, and some, like, nuts and bolts, very articulate. So, you know, I think it's important for this board, for us to work as a team in collaboration with the staff, you know, to be able to look at the full mosaic of, you know, how the district is put together, which is why I was asking for, you know, the Excel spreadsheet version of the master budget, so that we could see all the dropdowns, all the, you know, like, the breakouts between, you know, the cave and the cap's dues, or, you know, between, like, you know, what food services would be cut and which ones would not, you know, just to kind of be able to see that visually and have our time with it, you know, because we're volunteers, you know, so we have to put in our time when we can fit it in our life schedule. So that may happen six in the morning, may happen 11 at night. So I would just ask that we move with some alacrity and dispatch on getting those, that information together. And also the surveys, I know they're not necessarily strictly programmatic, but I would encourage, you know, again, just like climate, culture, that's all good to know, it's just big macro level stuff, you know, context. You know, it may not be some, there are some tangential thinkers here, I'm sure, you know, so like, it may not seem directly connected, but yeah, there may be a connection. And I would also encourage, moving forward, like, surveys, we should ask about programming and ask about, you know, be more targeted with our questions about, like, you know, what really grabs students as far as, like, you know, what sort of programs really they gravitate towards, and with the staff, too, like, what do they enjoy, what do they find resonates with the students the most? And that's all good information, like, again, I think, you know, to Adrian's point, you know, let's not be scared of raw data, you know, like, I can process a lot of information, you know, and I like to find my own way through it. So, you know, I don't want to necessarily, I mean, I don't want to disparage the efforts that have been put forth here. I appreciate them. But I also would like to have my own opportunity to kind of look at the big mosaic.
And to your point, I was going to suggest we add at least one more meeting this week.
This week is Friday?
Next week.
Next week.
Next week, I'm sorry, did I say this week?
You did.
I know we have one scheduled, but I would suggest if people can, can do it, you know, that we have at least one more. I don't, you know, I know we've.
We have one on Wednesday, because Monday and Tuesday are the president's holiday weekend.
Right. So, I don't know.
Could be up back-to-back for Wednesday and.
There's a Board of Ed Curriculum Committee at 6:00 on Thursday.
On Thursday?
And that's virtual?
It's virtual.
And we have until, we, our absolute deadline is putting a printed copy of the budget on the manager's desk by 4:00 PM.
4:30 on the 28th.
By 4:30 on the 28th of February.
That's correct. But that also, you know, puts a burden on Dave to produce that. It can't, my understanding is it can't be an electronic document, it's got to be a printed bound.
The 27th is actually our final deadline to vote on something that we support as a board.
So Monday is your regular meeting? The 26th?
The curriculum committee can get together after this and see if we want to either postpone it or make it on a different date, or make it non-virtual, because we want to really support this initiative before we do anything else, in my view, anyway. So we can talk about that later, after the meeting. Could we do that?
Can we do it right now?
We could, I mean, I don't really want to.
Budget.
The curriculum committee has only met twice in the last year, well, since last May. So I hate to lose meetings, but maybe we can just add one in early March, so we have two.
Yes.
Maybe two curriculum meetings in March.
Yeah, we can do that, because I think this has to come first, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, this is a lot.
Yeah, we're all here with that.
We have a sense that.
Rob is the.
Rob? I'm good with it.
Okay.
Good, thank you, Rob.
22nd?
Lev's got her hand up.
Yeah, I like that better. I'd rather give us more time, so we can get that thing bound and ready to go.
Is there another sheet for us to look at tonight, or we all through?
Is it time?
No.
Are we all through, or is there another sheet?
There's another sheet, there's another sheet.
I wouldn't want to.
Are we going to go through that next sheet, or what?
I just wanted to get a sense if people wanted to go, to meet next Thursday, so it sounds like at least a majority do.
Yes.
Yes.
What does that mean? I don't understand what that means.
May not be the popular suggestion, but should we also consider just putting something on, like, the 23rd, that Friday? I know it's the weekend, probably don't want to be here, but.
It's not that, I have, I have an obligation on Monday that, that requires me to work on Friday.
Oh, okay.
But if we have, we have a majority of people, I mean, what's the sense of adding a Friday? We could always cancel it.
Yes, it's just like a placeholder.
Or did you want to do Monday and Tuesday the following week?
Well, I think we were already talking about doing that.
Well, we already have our Board of meeting, don't we? Like, on the.
Yeah, Monday is all set.
Tuesday, it sounds like it's likely to happen.
Tuesday's like a due date, right?
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm, I'm willing to put days on this, you know, and then if we have.
By Monday, how many books?
You know, I don't like last minute, so like, us working until the 27th or something due on the 28th is just not, it just doesn't feel right to me.
How heavy is our, is our regular board meeting going to be this month? I mean, for the policy stuff, is there anything that has to be done? Can we just, advancing stuff?
Went through five policies. They did a good job on policy.
Are they time-sensitive? Are any of those time-sensitive, or could they be?
Probably not. But maybe we could get the ones that are for the second rounds, we could get those through, there were only two of those, and we'll hold off on the others.
So we could schedule an abbreviated form, or just add a budget session to the agenda item for the meeting, so we don't have to have another special meeting? If it's possible to have a light meeting, then we could do that. Right. First, I want to get a sense of how many would want to meet next Friday, Thursday and Friday.
I'm willing.
I'm good.
Okay, all right. And then we'll do an abbreviated agenda for the main meeting on the 26th and continue to work on the budget.
And where does that leave Wednesday, the 21st? Is that still a meeting?
Yes, we're still meeting.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
All-budget workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if for some reason we get through on Thursday, we can cancel Friday, but at least let's put it all on our calendars.
I'd rather schedule it and then cancel it.
Cancel, yeah.
And if you, maybe you could zoom in, I don't know.
I don't know. I want to do my taxes.
All right, I think, not too tall.
Open your checkbook.
Jake, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Just, as I learn, as I go through this, the books need to be printed on the 28th? Is that, is that what we're thinking? And how many do I need? I'm just trying to make sure I follow the.
Well, no, I, we, we need to have one book on the manager's desk on the 28th.
When I remember Ken doing all the books.
Oh, really? I, I mean, I don't think we need to receive our copy, other than.
If we got our copy two days later, it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, the operative thing is it has to be to the town manager, so. All right.
Is it time?
No, I think.
Oh, you asked that.
Yeah, no.
Listen, could you get out an email to all of us tomorrow? We're going to have to schedule.
Hopefully, we'll cancel Friday.
My wife's husband would appreciate it.
Wait till next time, for next year.
So, are we going to review this sheet? I'm a little confused by this sheet, because it seems to still include numbers.
I think it's the 2.2 that we've seen before, it's just spiked out with all of the individual positions.
Yeah, because I think that's what was requested, that we.
Oh, okay, all right. But now, some of these are being suggested that they be moved.
Well, Communication Specialist, which is budgeted here at 85, 6, 46.
Part of that is because, you know, the initial sheet we went through, these were just suggestions, right? So we haven't pulled anything, we haven't touched anything, so that's the original roster, per se.
And this is actually a reduction of what we had had during COVID, believe it or not, with ARPAS.
So, off the top, I'm seeing, you know, the, the big numbers there at the top, the guidance, the English Language Arts at the middle school, and the math at the middle school for over 100,000.
Wasn't that, was that supposed to? Dave, can you look at that one that he's mentioning, the guidance at Fitch High School? Was that the position we took off?
It was not the position we took off, it was one, one person transferring over.
Transferring to where?
From ARP, into the board.
Oh.
Can we project this, or do you have another copy of what you're talking about?
Here, I'll give you one.
No, I can project, I'm just.
Yeah, that's good for anyone watching.
February 28th.
Could I just interject, you seem at a pause point. After the meeting that we had with Town Council and RTM, I was astonished to hear from a council member that the possibility of a non-lapsing fund has been on their to-do list for years and years.
Now, I don't know about years and years, but it has been brought up recently.
It has been on there for years and years. My wife, Council of Board along, has brought it up, brought it up over four or five years ago.
So maybe some gentle nudging to have that, you know, we'll do our part, but you need to bring that up.
A quick interjection on that. A couple of years ago, the town council went through their agenda and they officially punted it to the Board of Ed. And the Board of Ed decided, the old board, prior to our taking our seats, decided to punt it to us, to the next board. So there was a sequence of events and a few meetings where it was talked about, and the town council officially punted it over to the board, and the board previous to us punted it into their future, which is us.
Well, maybe we can propose a joint working group of representatives from the council and the RTM and the Education Committee and us.
And I'd request to be on that. I would request to be on that group.
That liaison group that needs.
And I'd like to see a, a report on if we had had the non-lapsing, how much money we've given back to the town in the past five years that would have gone into that, and any other funds that would be eligible to go into it.
Didn't John give that to us?
And also, you know, move that forward and see what it takes. I mean, I know the town council has to approve it, but obviously, we can advocate for it, so.
And London does have it in place, you guys can get their copies of what they're doing.
Okay.
There's a lot of ways you can use that.
In fact, the referral that I did send to the board a few months ago, or a couple of months ago, I included a lot of information of other towns that did it and their deliberations, and how they set it up, and there's a number of different ways it could be done. It is backed by state law that empowers municipalities to do this, but it has to, the authority comes from the financial oversight of the town, which in this case would be the town council and RTM. So it does have to be a joint effort between all three bodies.
Right. And once the money's in there, they still have the oversight to determine.
Depends on how you structure it, that's optional. Like, it can be structured a number of different ways. They could keep the power of the purse strings under tight-locking key, or they could put it on, like, conditional, that it's easier access for certain items that are pre-approved. Or, you know, it could be broader access, depending on how three bodies feel they want to manage it.
Yeah, I definitely think we need to study that more closely.
Agreed, thank you.
Okay, do you have something to add to that?
I was just wondering whether it said the end of the month or the 28th.
No, we checked that. Leap year doesn't help us.
And it says by 4:30, you don't want to be a minute late.
It doesn't say 4:30 here.
Mr. Thomas already checked that for us.
It doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't matter? We can't do it on the 28th?
No exception, it's very specific with the date. By numeral, not by date.
Eastern Standard.
GMT.
No, I think people should look at it, though, to see, give us suggestions, recommendations.
So I, I might suggest that the next meeting, that if, if we have individual suggestions, I mean, obviously, the administration has, has given us these options. I think anyone that can come in with their own options and be prepared, I'd like to hear what everybody has to say and go through everything, you know, line by line.
Though I would need the expandable Excel spreadsheet version of the master budget.
Well, my understanding is that.
So first of all, there's, there's not an expandable, you're asking exactly what I want when I walked in here.
Right, we would like that.
We would like that.
We actually have to have it, you know, we're kind of past it. So it's a static Excel document, it's been in place for, I don't know, at least I can find, since 2015. So when I'm doing the budget, I'm literally manually putting numbers into this thing and linking them to, you know, a payroll file. So I wish it was drill-down capabilities, and then I'm putting notes as I start to learn, like, what's in accounts here, so I have some reference point. So there's not really an expandable, I know exactly what you're talking, but there's not an expandable file, I wish, I wish there was one.
We have to look for something for you.
We need a software that we can drill into that's accessible to everyone, so you get, so you get sort of free preview on this thing and get out of Excel. I mean, I've lost the file once, I had to rebuild it. I mean, it's, it's just too big of a file, it's, it's well past its time.
I feel for you.
No, it's not that, but I just, I just wanted to make sure you don't, you don't think I'm, I wish I had an expandable file, but it's, it's a static file that's about, I don't know, 20 gigs or so, I mean, I've had to have, I've had to have Clint intercede a couple of times.
You had to get a new computer, because it wouldn't.
Had to get another computer, because it wouldn't even log on my other, my, my first one, so I'm feeling it, because this is the first time I've been through something with a, a static file like this, and not again, not again. So Ian, just to back, and I have one follow-up for you, so there's, there's two solutions out there I'm looking at. Both of them integrate with Power School, so it's easy to sort of just move from a ledger into a budget file. I have meetings with both of those vendors on Tuesday, sort of a first precursor to get a, kind of a, you know, your mini demo type of thing. One I've used in the past, one is, is a Power School product itself, that, it's already part of our suite, per se, so I thought it was fair just to kind of take a look at that, so I'm moving on this, and I just, you know, got to get some things scheduled. The other one I've used is much more dynamic, it's a point-and-click, we used it because we wanted to actually get it out into the community, it's very.
For hardware.
Very user-friendly, but it's changed, right? It's been a few years now, so I need to get an update on that one.
What I'd like to see is, I mean, the state does it, the open checkbook.
Yep, I was just on there last night.
I mean, so that everybody can go in and see where we're spending our money.
Right, and, and so.
Just log in from home and.
So, yeah, to that end, I feel like we're a little hamstrung here, because, you know, it's like we don't have the access to the information, like I would love to try to come up with like my own sort of like variation of this sort of sheet, right, you know, but I don't have access to that level of information.
And I'm trying to figure out, you know...
People have been worrying this, for the short two years I've been here, it's welcome aboard.
Let's make the change, let's make this the last time we have to do it.
Well, I'm very curious about...
He'll be happy about that.
I'm very curious, the state's open checkbook, is that an open-source software? I mean, and if it's open source, can we export the information to that?
Yeah, I was on there last night, kind of trying to learn about it, because I've heard about this before. I tried to pull some of the OPEB information, yep.
There you go. So maybe we need to contact somebody at the state.
I mean, you know, we just, I personally would just need a little technical help there without purchasing a software, but I think there's a lot of solutions out there.
Right.
I thought I'd just look at the first two that were in our backyard, per se, you know.
Well, I don't think we're going to get this done, no, this weekend, we may have to wait another week, but I did want to...
It's a bad time for the changeover.
I did want to express that as difficult as this process is, the real work begins at 4:31 on the 28th, because stipulating that the OPEB works and we get down to 9.12% or we get down to 8.98%, is God made little green apples? That's not a religious statement. There's going to be concern about the impacts on the fiscal, on taxes. We need to be fancy about it, on taxes. And so I'm going to throw out an idea, give it some thought, if it's a bad idea, I've been told no before, it's okay, but I think we may want to make sure we all have the same message, and that we try, or instead of trying to say, who do you know best on the RTM? Who do you know best on the council? And just kind of divvy it up and have some individual meetings, not where we have three people and are having a board meeting, but just one board member to one RTM member, one board member to a council member, and say, we want you to understand the process by which we get, we got this, and try to pre-sell the package a little bit. Give it some thought, if it's not a good idea, that's cool.
Dan, did you have a comment?
So I know this is the proposal, like the reduction, but we should be prepared to come in even lower.
That's why I was suggesting...
We don't do it for us, and we won't have any...
Yes, and we won't have a choice. It's going to be hard, it's going to be painful, but at least we've considered it, we know what we're getting ourselves into, and we need to balance the teachers, the students, because they only get one shot, but if our town can't afford it, we can't put that burden on our town either. There's a difference between wants and needs, and we need to find that happy balance where we're providing the best services that we can, and I know if we go in at the 9 million, they're going to cut it for us, and that's probably not the place we're going to want to be at.
Quick follow-up, as far as like the requests for information that I sent, is there a way you could do screenshots of the static document in certain areas? Is that a way to kind of just go work around?
And your FOI?
And again, like anything I ask for, I'm hoping the whole board receives.
The FOI request, the staff was working on it today, I think it's complete, I just want to make sure I check with them in the morning. But that'll be...
It'll be in the frequently asked question.
Yeah, and that'll be, you know, static sheets for you as well.
Okay, but will it be like clearly identifiable, as far as like, like a separate section of the FAQ? I won't have to go...
Yeah, each of your questions is listed.
And I'll label it by account, so you can see that.
May I ask that each page carry the date, a date stamp and a page number, so that if we make further adjustments, we don't go bonkers trying to figure out which sheet is the right sheet?
Well, the sheets we're putting up there are...
I don't...
We use a header and a footer for it.
But they're coming out of the ledger, so I'm pausing on the page number piece, that's all.
It's above my pay grade, you know my concern.
I think to Ian's point, and correct me if I'm wrong, so if we're looking at certain of these lines, we don't need to expand them all, right? We know certified teachers, you know, group professional insurance, things like that. I mean, we're looking a lot at supply items, because we know salaries, we know FTEs, we know teachers in classrooms, right, that sort of thing, but we're trying to expand out some of these other, you know, instructional improvement services, technology education supplies, those are the sorts of things we're trying to, am I wrong? I mean, I think that...
Yeah, that's among, I mean, the list is in the email, so, of the areas I wanted to focus on, but, you know, part of that also was, you know, looking at historically, like, I mean, okay, so the big request was like looking back on a whole bunch of different budget years, but I'd be satisfied with just like the last three or four years, as far as like, you know...
You got all nine?
I got all nine.
Okay, great.
It's about 1,000, maybe 1,200 pieces of paper, but I got, I think we got it, I just need to check with them in the morning.
I mean, it'd be fine to put that on a drive, too, if you want, it saves on...
Yeah, it's on our shared now, so I just have to see, I have to see how big it is, but...
Okay. But yeah, as far as like also like, you know, dates of hire or when a position was created, that too?
I think Lori was working on that.
Is going to be in there?
Yeah, I think Lori was working on that one.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, it's taken an enormous amount of time for my staff, and they're working on a budget, and they're working on payroll, and they're working on their daily chores, too, but we do have a fabulous team here, and they rolled up their sleeves and they, you know, without doing overtime, because we cut back on overtime, but they have, you know, it's been a real divide and conquer and try to get these things out to you, we know the time period, but there are other pieces of work that have to happen in a central office for the day-to-day runnings of a school, so just know that.
Appreciate it.
We got it.
And yeah, actually doing it electronically, we'd probably just disseminate it amongst everybody so we don't all get a big stack.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we'll have it for you.
I just want to make sure you can understand it, because, you know, it comes out of a ledger, right, sometimes it's...
I don't want all nine years.
Dean is opting out.
Opting out of all nine years, yeah.
Maybe we just do them by year, so that if they don't want to go back nine years...
I have them by year and by a house, so I can't...
And someday, we'll look back to the open checkbook and wonder how we...
How we ever did it this way.
Exactly.
Yes.
All right. There are no other comments?
Are we going to talk about the staff changes?
The ARP SIR?
Yeah, the ARP SIR stuff.
You know, we have, may I interject, we added a couple of meetings, and I'll stay as long as you want, but I know I'm getting tired, I've been up since 5:30, and if we have a number of meetings, could we punt on that? Would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, and I want Denise to come back, too, because she's done a lot of good work talking to school-based health, and there was a question brought up about that, and how it could supplant school health nursing, and we have some answers on that, too, so...
All right, so Denise, you're going to be at the next, because I'm just wondering how much the SPED tutors, losing 43 of them, is going to do to our program, but we can talk about it later, if that's good with everybody.
They're not all tutors.
Well, then, motion to adjourn.
10 seconds, all in favor?
8:20.
Pose.
Aye.